In our perception of harm. So what is the student that filled out the survey? What is their perceived perception of harm of that substance? So their perceived perception of harm is their great risk in smoking marijuana. So you can see that that's extremely low compared to cigarettes. Think we've done a really good job with national campaigns and local education and school, Dare, and many other programs. We got the message out, you know, over the years as cigarettes are bad for us. We've done some, a good job with alcohol. Those marijuana is just going down. We're not seeing that at all rise. It's constantly going down and that becomes very concerning. So the students themselves who fill this out do not see great risk in smoking marijuana. Perception of parental and peer disapproval. So do they feel their friends would disapprove of them doing a substance? Or do they feel their parents would disapprove? And if I get anything wrong. So the parental, do they feel their parents would disapprove is higher? Again, you know, the parents seem to be talking to their kids about most issues. We mentioned gambling because gambling is an area of concern that's going up in all of our surveys. We're seeing more kids gambling and a lot of that is the sports betting and online gaming type gambling. So are, we have been tracking that over time and we are seeing that, one, parents aren't talking to their kids about gambling and the rates of gambling are going up. Perceived availability. So how hard do they think it is to get the different things? We include a gun in that because, I don't know why I've included it, but it's been included. Holdover. So how easy is it for them to get the following items? I'm going through this quickly. Antisocial behavior. We want to know, you know, what, again, are the behaviors of some of these students? We could do correlations. You know, those that do this substance are higher rate to do this or, but right now we have not done any correlations and that's just on average, those that filled out this, you know, this survey, stealing something that was, I believe, over a hundred dollars. Cheat on a test, ride with a driver under the influence or drive under the influence because you can't see the whole thing there. That's drive under the influence of alcohol or substance. Their self-concept, again, another big area that we're seeing some trends in. We are seeing, you know, how do they, we want to know how they're feeling about themselves and their communities and whether they feel part of, are happy with themselves and a part of their communities. So I feel lonely. Can I, I need this at the bottom.
Yeah, I feel sad most of the time. It's the second one. Unfortunately, I got cut off on screen. The third one is I have a number of good qualities. And then the last one is I believe my life is going in a positive direction.
Okay. So that, you know, on average, you can look at the students and they, it looks like for the most part, you know, they're really have a good self-concept and they're going in a positive direction and they have a number of good qualities and so that's great to see. On the next slide, we are tracking suicide and depression because again, the rates of depression seem to be going up. So I have thoughts of hurting myself. That's one in five students. We just gave that to you. You know, I felt sad or hopeless for more than two weeks, which is the definition for depression, one in seven students. And then the others, I have seriously considered attempting suicide. So these are areas, we highlight these so that if you are looking at different curriculum or changes in the communities or in the school, that this might, these might be areas you want to focus on. You know, if you're writing a grant, this, again, this is really good information to see if these percentages change the next time you do the survey, if there's something that you really want to work on. Social support and that's who do they talk with? So the first one is talk with a parent or guardian. Second one is talking with a friend. Third is talking with a teacher. And fourth is keeping it to yourself. So we know that, again, most students are talking to their friends or keeping it to themselves. And how can we make those numbers change and where they have someone that they can talk to? The next one is family has clear rules about substance use. So do they feel their parents have clear rules? This is, again, their perception of their parents' discussions with them on the rules that the parents might have if they use substances. So, you know, want to get those numbers higher. Perception of school environment. Try hard to do good at work. I feel safe and they encourage and support me. Perception of community. The first one is community is a safe place. The second one is a lot of drugs are sold in my community. And then the third one is adults value teens. So in the community, do they feel that adults value their teens?
Sorry, on that one, what were the other? It says definitely true. So was there like somewhat true, no, no opinion, not true, definitely not true?
Yeah, there's four options, I believe.
It's definitely not true, mostly not true, mostly true, or definitely true. And it's actually, if you guys got a copy of the report, the numbers are in there.
Okay, I'll look in there because those numbers look low for that, but if you combined it with mostly true, you'd probably get a better.
Right. So we asked them, what are the top ranked prevention strategies? Because we're in the world of prevention, our agency, and we're always looking at different ways that would reach the students and young people. So their perception was checking IDs. We do do compliance checks. We would love to do them in East Lime anytime soon and check your liquor stores to see if they're providing to underage. Having their license suspended and friends who don't drink. So the peers are very important, as we know, in middle school and high school. Peer perception, peers that don't drink, peer support, all of that extremely important to them. So the lowest ranking strategies in their perspective is alcohol, education in school, advertisements related to alcohol, and high price. And you kind of see a shift lately that there's not a lot of funding going towards those big, large marketing campaigns because it's not reaching the students that we want it to reach. Gambling, as I mentioned before, 21% of youth report gambling in a lifetime and 2% are gambling daily. 6% have someone in their life that are gambling and might be creating problems in home. So it might not be our students, but it might be the parents or their caregiver that is struggling with the gambling.
What, sorry, what do you refer to as gambling? That really tastes like fantasy football, do you?
Anything, scratch tickets, anything. Yep, there's a definition, but scratch tickets, anything risking something of value. Yep, fantasy, football, all of that. And then we want you to understand how, you know, East Lime and the region compares, I guess, against the nation. We have a regional report, so that is our regional report for southeastern Connecticut, the 6.8. And we have a new regional report coming out any day. We have the preliminary report being announced tomorrow or presented tomorrow. So we're going to see if those numbers have changed and it will be interesting to see. But we have surveyed every, at this point, every high school in the region and we have continued our surveys outside of the region. So this just gives you a little bit of comparisons. And then the next one.
What is this?
This is just trends over time.
Oh, because.
So you can see that recent use of cigarettes, alcohol have all gone down. You guys have done surveys three times now, 2008, 2012, 2015. So this is showing what has happened over the course of this three surveys.
So this is why we look to the communities to repeat these surveys every two years so that they can see the changes. And there has been, you know, a decrease in use. And marijuana, so recent marijuana use went from, it's grade eight, if you look over on the left, went from zero to 1.7. Grade 10, 8.1 to 14.3. And grade 12 over there is, went down. So 26.2 to 20.6. So the other two grades individually went up and the senior class, this senior class last year, I guess, went down. And then we have here the, also the availability and how that has changed for substances. And do they feel, again, is it available to get and?
For everything, they say it's gotten harder.
Gotten harder, yeah. Disapparent disapproval, which we talked about, we're really seeing some of those trends changing in a lot of communities. You know, again, our parents talking to their kids about different substances. So you can see here that it's shifting in a few different grades, but not necessarily all of them. Imparent disapproval, again, of alcohol. If you have any questions, let me know. Cigarettes, perceived harm, perceived harm. These are one of the biggest prevention areas for us. Again, if you can change perceived harm, then you can, the later someone starts using, the less chance they have, you know, lesser of a chance that they have develop a problem. So perceived harm, we want to increase that. We want them to change their rate of use or starting to use so that we can ultimately change the rate of addiction. And that is it. So we do work with the community. We are working with your coalition and we can do some individual, some more work to help you decide what are the next steps that you might want to take from the survey. I know that you all probably talk about this on a regular basis, but how can you use this survey to really make some significant changes on a couple of them? It's not, again, we always say this is not for the school particularly to do themselves. This is a community problem. It's a community issue. This is for the whole community to address and work at. And as you can see, there's different parts of the community that could be doing different things. So we would be happy to work with you and help you decide on what areas you would like to focus on so that you can hone in on changing some of these percentages in a different direction.
Let's get back to our seats. We may have some questions for you before you move apart.
Just while you're sitting, the East Lime Youth Coalition, one of the things that came out of the results and the coalition is made up of some teachers and administrators from the school system, parents and that kind of thing, and some youth services people. What we're looking at, one of the things that jumped out with us was that one in nine students had contemplated suicide. And so with that, that's kind of been the focus or we want to drive the focus as the youth coalition is that, that was our focus this year is to do that. And so I know I've met with Jeff and Ann Daigle and we're going to look to do our annual, you know, awareness prevention seminar. We're looking for that during, in September, which is Suicide Awareness Month. So we're working towards those, those types of things. And that was, so this was a great tool for us. Just that one item jumped off the page to us. So just, just wanted to.
Yeah.
Make that apparent to you guys.
And we do have that great resource with the Daigle Foundation in town and, again, with youth services and C-Rac all working together to drive home a message that may be heard. I will make mention that Superintendent Newton's here tonight as well as Board of Ed member, Jamie Bar Shelburne. Something like that. Did I get it right? Shelburne. Yeah, I never know. Other questions? I'm sorry, Jamie. At least I get the first name right. Questions for C-Rac or Dave?
Yes, was there a block on this so that a student could only answer once?
The way that this survey is set up.
Just get onto the microphone.
The way that the system is set up, it's on the computers at the school.
Dave, you want to put the microphone, yeah, there we go.
And a student could sit down at the computer twice and do it because we have to allow multiple responses from that computer for it to work at the school. However, it's done during a class period where they sit down, they have the time and then they have to leave and the survey takes about a class period. So it would be difficult for them to do it twice.
Thank you.
Did you find the response rate in East Lime was comparable to the other districts where you administer the survey?
Oh, yes. There are really no changes or differences compared to our other towns that we are working with right now.
So it's a pretty high representative sample across the board throughout the region? Okay, thank you.
So we talked about the depression and the lonely part and we'll crunch those numbers some more because there are, the information is deeper than what you could show and I understand the reason for that. What else in this report jumped off the page you, this is what you do throughout our towns and you're the, you're the regional expert on this and I've known you for years and you see trends and you administer these surveys. What jumps off at you for, especially East Lime?
Oh, gosh, especially, I don't know if I would say especially.
Or a couple of things.
East Lime, but I mean, as I mentioned, we really do have a strong concern around marijuana use. I, we don't feel that there is a lot of education to, and solid education that speaks to the students, I will say, that speaks to the students, that recreational marijuana use can be bad. So we struggle with this all of the time and we're constantly doing, meeting with state representatives and state groups to try to figure out what message will speak to the students about recreational use. And with some of the changes in the laws with medical marijuana and all of that, we are seeing the perception of harm really go down. What we're hearing anecdotally, and we would love to do some maybe focus groups, but anecdotally we are hearing, you know, that the rates of prescription drug misuse are higher and getting higher. And so we're going to focus this year on some, doing some focus groups with smaller groups of students and try to really figure out what that means and when it's happening, where it's happening, what, you know, to what extent. So, but again, that's a trend that we're seeing in many places and not just with the youth, obviously, with adults misusing prescription, prescription pain meds, especially for pain and different things. Would you?
That's what I would say. Same thing as the prescription drugs and marijuana.
Yeah.
I have a question. I got the sense that prescription drug abuse is seen as a gateway to heroin abuse. Am I reading that right? And.
Yeah, but it starts earlier. I mean, yes, there is a linkage between marijuana use and prescription drug use, but yes.
Okay. Well, just, you know, I've been retired for a few months now, but I don't think it's changed a lot. I know one of the reasons heroin became a much drug of choice, not so much in high school, but as you said, as they get older is because a milligram, for oxycodone or a prescription opiate, it's roughly, to purchase it, to use it illegally is about a dollar a milligram.
Yes.
So 30 milligram oxycodone is $30, $80 for an 80-milligram. A bag of heroin was going for $5 to $7. As you progress in time, you can't afford it, you may not have the availability of the prescription drugs anymore. So, you know, that's what they have to turn to. And it's become a bottle, it's a chemical dependency. It's not just a drug of choice. And the same thing with marijuana. We have had, seen where it does maybe have some benefits medically and, you know, there doesn't seem to be a lot of discussion of that. And I think too many people are confusing the fact that it's used medically with it's good for you.
Yes.
It's not. And one of the things too is, and I'm sure you stress this too, because I taught Dare for several years. We realized that the major impact was that was positive interaction between police and students. It really didn't do much to deter drug. And the two biggest things that would help impact a child's decision-making is peer pressure, being with the right people, and parental involvement. Talk to your children, that's always the best. And an example, I was very fortunate with my kids, if they tried to do something wrong before they got a chance, I got a phone call from somebody because of what I, you know, what I did. So, but, you know, that's just, I can't overemphasize enough the need for parents, grandparents and so forth to sit down with their family and talk about things. That's the best way to, you know, keep a discussion open. Like they talk now about, make sure you have family time once a day.
Right.
Whether it's dinner or something. That's all.
Yeah, so one of the, so we did not have a slide for it and I don't have the information in front of me, but it's in your full report. One of the things I would say is significant from town to town is why they're using substances. So, and, oh, we didn't ask why here.
Talk about other towns. You didn't do it in this one, but you have a comment.
There's a difference between why people are using substances and so, you know, people might say one town, oh, they're using so much, but all the towns are using, for the most part, the same rate. But when you drill down and you ask the students why, we have one town that says, you know, that they're using because they feel stressed, it's to relieve stress, they feel too much peer pressure to get good grades, to get, you know, maintain jobs, to maintain sports. It's a stress relief. And then we have other communities that don't rely on that and they say they just have nothing to do and it's kind of that, you know, to relieve boredom. So what we would probably want to look at too, and so one of the things you could do is really try to drill down, why are the students choosing to use? Because that's the part of the target of where you want to address some of your efforts and how can we, you know, give them alternatives as well. And then to address your point, we are, we work very much with all the entities in the community and we're trying to create a campaign to educate dentists to not prescribe too much because our kids, when they get their molars out, that's one of the times they're prescribed a narcotic, so, or, you know, pain medication. So how can we educate our dentists for that age group and then the parents to say, please don't prescribe 30 days worth because they're not going to use it and then it sits around the house potentially. And then the other one is sports injuries and educating doctors, you know, around sports injuries in the high school age group.
Mr. Newton, you're here. I don't want to put you on the spot, but I wouldn't want to, I would want to give you the opportunity if you had a question or you can always talk to C-Rac offline, but if there's something that you want to make a comment on.
Absolutely, would love to. Thank you. Two things. One, we've had the opportunity to have an alcohol and drug, part-time alcohol and drug counselor at our high school this year, which is really, I think, done some great things so far. It hasn't been very long. We, that individual came in right around the start of the new year, but that's been very, very helpful. We already have a few students who are working with that individual and it's a great connection just for conversations to be, to be occurring. So that's one piece. And as Dave had mentioned with the mental health side of things, we have, I provided the board a list, Jamie, and I can't remember the exact number, but we've, we, there's a two-on-one crisis call center that we utilize when high school students or middle school students are in crisis. And we've had double-digit numbers of students that we've had to utilize that system to call for help, whether it be an ambulance, whether it be the parent comes in, you know, to get them, to take them to the hospital. So that happens regularly. How we're addressing that and the follow-up that occurs is so very important. So I think with our focus, both between town and district, on the mental health side of things, I'm happy to see that we're, that's going to be a push because that all leads to the scariness of suicide. And it's amazing the statistics in talking with Ann Daigle. So we're working on it. And thank you both for, this presentation was great. Appreciate it.
Yes, Mr. Salerno, I'm sorry.
Thank you for the presentation. This is the second time I saw it, I was at Board Ed, but something popped out at me this time that I didn't pop out last time and that was the social supports. Sometimes, always, that's if somebody's like depressed, who do they go to?
Yes.
The number that kind of struck me is unfortunately low is to talk to teachers. Does that also include like guidance counselors?
It's worded.
Is it worded?
The question is talk to a teacher. So however the student interprets that is how they're answering it, but it does not mention a guidance counselor or any other kind of.
Okay. The number that does pop out at me is a little unfortunate.
It's consistent with what we see in every town.
Really?
Yes. Consistent.
Wow, okay.
I can actually tell you that for our region, I wrote down all my regional numbers, it was 2.3% of kids who were, who talked to an adult. So 3% for you and 2.3% for the region.
Really?
Same.
So it's a problem everywhere, okay. The only other question I have is the gambling numbers. It's kind of hard to make sense to that. Do you have like real gambling issues? Does it, does it start with fantasy football and NCAA? I mean, that seems like a little different than people that have turned into, you know, real gambling issues where they turn into, right?
Gambling by definition is risking something of value.
Yeah.
You know, on an uncertain circumstance. So they all fall into that category. I mean, casino gambling versus fantasy sports all fall into risking something of value potentially. Now, what are our kids gambling with right now? We're hearing that if they don't have money, they're gambling sneakers and sweatshirts and things like that. So, but to them, it's something of value. And then when the money does come into their, you know, in, they have access to money, they are, we are hearing of instances where they're kind of trying to challenge themselves, you know, in a more risky way with their finances. So, but the definition would cover all fantasy sports, gaming.
Is there a way in future ones to kind of break that down? Because it would be really interesting that the other one is a more concerning one to me.
Yeah.
Where they're risking something of value for sneakers or whatever like that. Is there a way to break that down in the future?
Into types of gambling?
Yeah, to separate those two. I'm not saying.
Yeah, we could definitely ask the question of, you know, yeah, types of gambling that they're choosing to partake in. You know, I think that the, right now, the trend is the fantasy sports, which I believe there's a bill coming up in this session related to fantasy sports and whether Connecticut should make it legal. And so we're following that very much. But that is the, tends to be one of the largest areas for young people right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else, folks?
I have one more question. I see you were tracking energy drinks.
Yes.
And what is the connection with that?
So the energy drink is very harmful to a young person and the young person's body because of the amount of caffeine that is in the drink itself. So for example, one Monster equals five cans of Coke. So the Monster, the one Monster drink equals the amount of caffeine of five cans of Coke. So, so when you, a young person is drinking that, they're developing a caffeine addiction and they're crashing at some point during the day. And are they crashing in school? Are they crashing at home? Are they crashing on the sports field or are they maintain, do they need to maintain this caffeine high and drinking a few of them in a day? My sons play sports and they're taking them before wrestling matches and different sporting events, some of the kids, not my son. So, you know, before to, and just understanding the dangers of that. And then when they're old enough or have access to alcohol, you're mixing a stimulant with a depressant. So you have the energy drink, which is a stimulant, and they feel less intoxicated. They feel, you know, like there's a lessened sense of pain and they're excited and happy and they don't feel the depressant of the alcohol, so they're drinking more. And then we have the incident where it catches up and they're blacking out, spacing out, and there are more accidents occurring. So the energy drinks for the young body is extremely dangerous and even for shift. So, um, the energy drinks for the young body is extremely dangerous and even for shift workers of adults. That would be another one, another time.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you all for your presentation this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you for the Board of Ed and coming out, Public Schools Superintendent. And more discussion, you know, surveys aren't good if you don't do something with the information. You know, it's good to have, you know, put them around to implement some of this stuff.
Yeah, our youth, the Youth Coalition meets monthly. Our next meeting is February Wednesday, uh, February eleventh, next Thursday, I believe, is my right. Thursday, the eleventh, at five o'clock at the Parker Rec Office. The public's invited, you're all invited to come and participate in the, in the Youth Coalition. So just wanted to make you aware.
Terrific, thank you, Dave.
Yeah, thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Appreciate that presentation. All right, I'll let you unplug and do all that stuff that you're going to do. We're going to carry on with our meeting. No, no, that's okay. So the resolution of the Emergency Management Performance Grant is in, I believe in your packets. This is to authorize, um, First Selectment to sign and execute any and all documents on behalf of the Board of Selectmen and to do and perform all acts and things which deems necessary, appropriate to carry out the terms of these documents. The Emergency Management Performance Grant is something I believe we get every year. It pays for some of our emergency operations center, I believe, to the tune of thirty-three thousand dollars. And that's what we're talking about tonight.
Okay. With the following resolution, resolve that the Board of Selectmen may enter into with and deliver to the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, formerly the Department of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, any and all documents which it deems to be necessary or appropriate. And further resolve that Mark C. Nickerson, as First Selectman of East Lime, Connecticut, is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the Board of Selectmen and to do and perform all acts and things which he deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents, including, but not limited to, executing and delivering all agreements and documents contemplated by such documents.
Second. Any, uh, any comment? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstain? Take a, uh, public service announcement here. Thank you, Karen, for stepping in tonight at the last minute to do our, our notes. Want to make sure I don't go through this meeting without saying thank you for stepping up at the last minute. Mrs. Stevens had a, uh, a family situation. So we'll go to, uh, to C, which is the road acceptance. Mr. Geishel, our town planner and our resident expert on all things Peach Lane and Arbor Crossing, is here to answer any of your questions. Basically, we are accepting a few more roads up in the Orchards Development, which has been, um, finished and, uh, at least that portion. And I think you have a whole packet on this information. The town engineer, Victor Benny, has signed off on it and so has Mr. Geishel and the Planning Commission. Should we take a motion and then comment?
Sure. Make the following, uh, resolution to accept Peach Lane and portions of Arbor Crossing in the Orchard subdivision. Move the following. Whereas the East Lime Planning Commission has recommended that the town.